January 30th to quarter 7:02 PM. We have a full board here tonight. It will not be necessary to have an alternate. What I would like to say regarding, since we're back to a full board, our alternates, what we will be doing in the future with our alternates, Jim and Tom, the first meeting of the month. Jim will be voting if we need to have an alternate vote. The second, the third, the first meeting will be Tom will be voting if we need an alternate. Of course, if there's a time when we need both alternates, they both will be voting. But Jim, you will be the alternate chosen on the first meeting of the month. Tom, you will be the alternate chosen on the meeting, our second meeting, which is third meeting of the month. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our January 2nd meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 16?
Second.
Second.
Wait a minute, something's wrong here. It is the 16, so we need to correct that, okay?
So I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 16, 2020. Wait a minute, yeah, I'm sorry.
Last time we approved the minutes of January 2nd.
Yes, but on this paper it's written...
No, the date is January 16.
No, please, down here, under approval of the minutes.
Those are the minutes that we approved at the meeting of January 16.
Well, you know, you're probably, I'm probably just really getting older and rather confused about it, so we shall move forward.
We've had that brought before.
Thank you.
What are the minutes?
Minutes, we've had that. We'd like to adjourn this meeting. Yes, we have.
I'll give the motion.
Okay. Are there any questions? Are there any missions? Any changes? All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, we want the vote registered as 4:01.
Yes. Leslie was not here, so it's 4:01. On to old business. We received a phone call from Mr. Woods who is stuck in traffic on Route 16 due to a car accident. So we are going to flip the agenda around, which means our friend Joe is going to be up first.
Thank you, watch.
You are welcome. What are we talking about tonight, Joe?
Well, as it kind of states on the agenda, we haven't submitted the additional information to Ken yet. The meeting that I'm supposed to have with him hasn't happened yet regarding that stuff. Him and I really want to review it and iron it out before we bring it back.
On your county?
Yeah, so for your county, we have no new information slash progress until I have that meeting with Ken.
Okay. And, but you were sitting in front of us.
Yes.
Okay.
Figured this wonderful third bonus meeting here this month could briefly discuss the Pat Stevens project and just maybe review where we are at. And then I'm sure you all got it too, but I have this nice little memorandum from North Star, planning who looked at the project as well for the meeting, we wanted to discuss that again.
I don't know if Ken can copy this.
I thought one of Andrew was there here, I figured everybody had it.
I may have it in here.
I'll get some copies now.
Can you make me one in sort of the end, right?
Yeah. So basically, again, my goal is to hope that you guys had a chance to look at it. I'm happy to answer any questions I can. And I'm always just hoping we can deem everything clean enough here at some point to get the site hearing part of this schedule so we get to the meeting of the approval, you know, process anyway. So that's my goal. And then again, I was provisionally discussing these comments that are coming back here. Most of them are pretty straightforward, pretty reasonable, nothing...
As soon as we get that, we'd be glad to go over it. If I can make one comment that we appreciate very greatly is, this is put up by your company. You have an index page, your pages are numbered. Now, some people might go, oh, it is a big deal, and thank you, we appreciate it greatly.
Appreciate you and Ken.
It really is...
Always trying to make it better, always trying to make it easier for both of us.
Yes, and, you know, I know somebody on the board would say, if you can do double sided.
Yes. I'm getting pressure, right now my print printer, it's real pain to do it. I'm getting pressure from my second command at the office to get one for the same reason, so.
The comments that came from your consultant, I kind of took it and made a little more concise heading for checklist. I don't know which one is easier for you.
Thank you, dear. You see how easy I get those copies?
And you make things happen.
Yeah. Thank you, Christina.
And this is, and Christina has the actual, yeah, and this is...
Things seem to go so nicely, we have quality staff.
What are you saying, Dennis?
See him right there, look.
This is just... It would help if it doesn't, and... Christina, when you come in, can I have one too?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll leave this in the middle. This is, this is perfect. So we did talk to you a little bit about this last week. And it's basically exactly one parcel being taken from the mother, from the mother lot.
Yep, on the east of the end, we're trying to remove minimum size lot with minimum size work permits.
Now, what you have in front of you are questions that came up. So I'd like you to go over that with us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
I can bring back my coffee.
Oh.
Well, why, why, Joe, there's two lots on this broken up.
No.
All the total parts.
Well, there's one.
There's one and there's one.
Correct, we're taking one and splitting one off. She was saying we're making one off. So we can create a second lot.
Okay, Joe, I understand, my mind is just, I understand the flavor.
So if we look at this, it is just the far right in green, the spin.
The two of these.
And...
Hopefully I won't blind anybody.
He hasn't approved you yet, has he?
I almost did, I was looking at it a minute ago.
You don't want to wipe these cookies, you're crossing across. All right. So let's go through this. You saw the letter from the consultant.
Yep, I did.
And he finds the, and I think we agreed, the preliminary plan application is complete. He did review, has some review comments, so why don't we just take them from the top. For section 10.1B, 3, the final plan shall include a number, include a note that prohibits division of lots or specified any future division shall constitute a revision to the plan. That will be recorded on this.
Yep, that's a pretty common request, I have no issue at all adding that to the plan.
For section 10.1B, 5, the applicant shall provide lot address numbers on the final plan that facilitate mail delivery.
Yep, yep, again, I'm happy to do that for final plan. The last one that we did, you know, in NACER Farms there, we sat down with the staff here, Ken and everybody, and finished that up towards the end of the project. Haven't done it yet, but certainly happy to do so again to the final plan.
Did I make?
Yes, of course.
This review is for the preliminary plan. And I would, my understanding of this is that he wanted this done for the, in the documentation for the preliminary plan.
I mean, that's fine, it doesn't matter to me. At this point in time, you know, I can add it the next time up here, whatever step in the process we want to say.
I'm going to throw out, and if anybody agrees or disagrees, please say so, is that his recommendations are, one, the preliminary plan application is complete. So we're done with that, all right? We will vote on it later tonight. Now, this is what he wants to see in the final plan, he says right here on one, final plan shall be...
Okay, not this one.
Okay. Would you concur?
I stand corrected.
Corrected?
I am.
For sure, okay. We'll go on, and please, don't, you know, I'm only reading, so the rest of you, you know. Section 10.1D of the ordinance calls for stone and concrete monuments at subdivision corners. The plan currently shows five iron rod monuments in the subdivision corners.
So that's something, you know, it comes down to the preference of the board. Many of the ordinances around mention that, Atkins does, Shafley's does. That's generally something we ask for waiver for, just because we feel that, we feel that the iron rods serve just the same purpose and they're not quite as expensive or painless to install, especially in rocky areas. But, you know, this particular subdivision, I think there's only two pins that aren't in already to begin with, so we're talking two corners of, you know, I'm willing to go whatever route the board would be. We tend to, usually when we stick to the concretes, it's major curve points or angle points and roadways, things like that, property corners, we generally do ask for permission to set iron rods. Have survey marker with my license on the top of it. But that will ultimately...
So you will ask for a waiver on that?
Yeah, if that sounds reasonable to the board. Well, everything else is in, but the two lot, the two lines that haven't been approved between lots one and two, those are currently proposing to be iron rods. But that's generally how we deal with that issue. Certainly don't mind discussing it with the board if anybody has reason to request concretes, but more often than not, we do shoot for the rebar.
Just ask for the waiver, because I think we have to stick to the ordinance right now.
There is, in the subdivision regulations, there is a waiver.
There is a waiver procedure, waiver procedure. Let's go on to 12 PM. Go to page.
Yeah, page 56.
Thank you. I'm just going to give that a quick read, Joe.
Absolutely.
Do you know what the other corners are, all right?
Yeah, they're cap, they're survey rebar, some of which our company set for some previous boundary work here and some of which were set by corner post land surveying when they surveyed to the north of this property back, I think, in 2004.
So there's already art, iron rod.
So you're saying two are iron rods and...
So yes, there's already an iron rod here.
Yeah.
There's one there, there, and there already. The only three that aren't in at this time would be this one, this one, and then the one down here by the brook.
Right.
And that will be, again, I've written a very simple waiver request for this sort of thing. In many other instances, it's not something, as long as we sort it out before the final approval, it should be a pretty easy matter. So I'll bring the language that's worked in the past, you guys can read it, see if you agree with it, makes sense. I think you're well within your right to grant that waiver if you want to, but if you don't want to for some reason, that's your right as well. I didn't stress on this one at all.
Right, okay, I just, because of what the ordinance says, I want to keep it on the F and up. And I don't think you're having a problem either.
Yeah.
So we've granted those waivers in the past, so, but to grant a waiver, we have to have that paid for.
Absolutely, yes, I don't believe you can roll on this unless I give you a written request.
I appreciate that very much.
I normally include that in that bound packet you have, it's like second or third page in there, but I definitely didn't include this particular waiver in there.
Okay.
I can submit a request for that.
Okay. Applicant should be aware of well location restrictions in regard to the right of way for section 10 to A1.
I don't understand that one.
Is there a right of way across?
Where is the right of way?
Well, I'm guessing they're speaking of the right of way for the main road, Milton Mills Road. There's, there are restrictions on how close to the major roadway or any right of way that we can put a well. I don't know what the number is that you're going to call out here in a minute, but what I can tell you is that there's another issue that's going to come up here on the second page of the letter, and we're going to be able to kind of kill two birds with one stone in it. There's a buffer area, required buffer area of 50 feet along the roadway that is required, and that is a good catch by them, and I apologize for not having that on there, but by creating that buffer area along the road where the people can't do anything within 50 feet of the road, you're also going to take care of kind of the item that we're on now. You know, if you can't, as long as no wells are able to be put in that buffer area, there should be no issue with either.
I assume that restriction just because of contamination and...
Yeah, it just, you know, some people don't look at it that way, but also the, you know, the roadway is a boundary, a boundary line, just as much as the side, the rear, the back, even a lot of people don't look at it that way. So there's, you know, restrictions for septics, for wells, for a variety of things. We can't be too close to the road sideline, just like we can't be other directions. But yes, I think there's an additional buffer there, just let's keep it away from the sand, that's all, let's say, just to be on the safe side, I think it's better. The rules have come from...
And you're not always sure what the easements are, because, I mean, out here, the state has a 100 foot easement. Well, that's, there ain't too many of them around, you know what I mean? So if you didn't realize that, and you put your, the good chance that they'll be driving will be well someday.
Yeah, it's a great example. Some people that wouldn't know would go, okay, it's going to be 10 feet from the road, and they go up all 10 feet off the edge of the pavement, their well would be 40 feet off.
Right, right.
I think that's part of the spirit of, hey, let's call it out in the plan that it specifically shouldn't go up by the road. Again, I'm fine with that. There'll be a 50 foot buffer that we need to put there, and there'll be an additional number in the plan about that buffer. I certainly don't mind adding a few words to say, hey, reminder, no wells being on here as well. That whole line is...
And that is number two under 10.6, I believe, is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
And that would be on the final plan?
Yeah, I plan on, for that note two and the 10.2, the well I'm running now, doing one combined note to cover most of those issues.
Okay. Anybody questions?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm in mine, I'll wait. I'm looking, must it's all, we're all done with this?
No, it's fine.
Okay, I'll wait.
10.3, erosion and sedimentation and impact on water bodies.
Well, in this instance, the only nearby water body is the brook, which is protected by a wetland and then a 250 foot setback, resource protection setback from that wetland. So we have a pretty fair amount of protection there anyways, but what I have done in the past to help reinforce that sort of thing too is, I've got two diagrams that I like to add sometimes from the DEP's best management practice, and the little siltpens diagram, and the other one, I don't mind, you know, we sometimes add that to the plan to help reinforce that everybody pay attention to erosion control. You know, some of that, you know, not much of it would apply to lot one. Lot two, I think some of that, you know, we're not building a road, we're not doing anything at this point in time that's going to significantly change the current pattern of the lot already. Some of that is dealt with through the building process too, depending, we tend depending on what what the client decides to do with the property or where, you know. It makes a big difference if they're trying to put a future building on the west side versus the east side, how that whole topic might be dealt with. One thing we will be doing as part of this and kind of, you know, as part of my discussions with DOT when we were looking at these entrances and talking to Ken before we even submitted the application, we do plan on reclaiming the area of the existing road that's inside the resource protection area, you know, so blown and ceded in that particular area, moving the entrance up here outside of the resource protection and it's better, safer site distance there, moving up the hill a little bit too.
And would you be reseeding in the other area?
At this point in time, I don't, I know, I don't want to speak for the client on that behalf. I know we plan on doing it inside, inside of the resource protection area. And I certainly, once we've done the site lock, I will be inviting him to be here for a meeting or two just to speak to you guys directly, once we get kind of some of these functionality parts of it out of the way. At this point in time, I don't know any plans to reclaim that, but I'm not sure he necessarily be adverse to that idea either.
Some of that's naturally reclaimed already, that review.
To some degree, you know, there were, I can tell the last year or two, there was still some four wheeler use and things like that, people connecting down the trails out here, but new land or stuff kind of moved in, and I don't think there's as much activity out there anymore. But, yeah, so some of it has reclaimed itself. There's a little bit that we still need to do there.
Anybody else on that? Okay. And 10? 10.12, sorry. Yeah, I did, I'm sorry. 10.6, we took here two already. One for section 10.6A1. Final plan will include a note limiting the clearing of trees to the areas designated on the plan. And that will be recorded on the, it will be recorded in the restrictions on each lot.
Yeah, I'm, again, I'll, we have no issue with that. We can add a note to the plan and, you know, make sure that they don't get into any future deeds, you know. So, yeah, I don't, that's sort of the intention of the two different colors on the plan. Lighter areas where people aren't supposed to disturb that stuff. And I was not saying they're going to clear that entire dark green area, but that's kind of what we've set aside as here's where, here's what you have to work with if you want to propose your structure somewhere inside that, you know, structure.
How would they define that limiting?
As far as...
Like, what does that really mean?
Well, you know, it's a slightly different situation, but, you know, kind of going back to the NACER Farms project, there was, there were one or two of the properties where Ken actually looked at the building plans and explained to the people, hey, you're kind of outside the area where you're supposed to disturb here, and he kind of led them to place it. And even in one instance, he made me go back and locate the building and submit a little sketch that showed, hey, this fell within, within the bounds of where we're going to install it, so. It's...
So as of this time, there's no building being planned for this subdivision?
Correct.
And you would have to come back, or he would have to come back and talk to Ken about building permits and these things, which could be picked up at that time as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the only tree buffer that would be concerned, I would think, would be that 50 foot buffer along the road.
Exactly, that's, that's my thinking.
As far as the rest of it.
We put, we put the note on the notes, and those note boxes get bigger and bigger, I know, all the time.
Yeah, we're always juggling that, you want to try to get everything on there. But if we clutter the plan too much, then nobody reads anything.
Yes, especially when it's this big, if you are correct.
Yeah.
All right, anybody, any more questions?
So we're going to just assume that the limit of tree clearing is the building?
Yeah, I can reword that, so that's more clear. I agree, I could, that could be better said on there. You know, I know what I meant, we meant by the color scheme, but I, you know, the plan well lined up is black and white at the registry of deeds, so I'll call that out in a little better fashion, make sure it's clear on the next version that comes along. Didn't even upset you, I said you were extending the meetings on this stuff.
No, it's all right. No, I mean, I understand the limit, whether I agree with it or not, I understand the limit of the buffer between the road and the whatever. I understand the limit of the buffer between the road and the whatever.
Right.
But as far as the rest of the property, I don't understand any restrictions at all. It doesn't make any sense to me. You're not, you're not entering in any resource protected area. You're not, I mean, it's just too weak as a property, and if somebody wants to, so for example, get a horse and clear the back acre and a half and turn it into a pasture, what makes the difference? I just see, I don't see, other than the fifty-foot buffer, I just don't see any ration now for restricting what somebody can cut on the plan if it's not in the shore of the resource protection, that's all.
What? I think we're just trying to follow ten point six one.
Yeah.
That's all we're doing. So, and if you, you said, oh, they're gonna turn the whole thing into a field, and you put that on the plan, you can prove that, too, and then that would be the limit of tree clearing in the future.
Well, I mean, don't trust me, the thoughts cross my mind, you know. As a homeowner, I have, you know, if it were my property, I'd be thinking more like Dennis's, you know, why am I restricted to a tree here that's not here when it's eight, you know, eight-hundred feet away from the brook? But on the consultant's side of the table, I'm reading that requirement, trying to, okay, let's pick half the lot, let's pick a happy medium, because I don't want you guys to get stuck on it, but I'm trying to still provide the landowner with some freedom, so I, you know, in some senses, the shapes there are somewhat arbitrary. That's just me having been on the lot, knowing if I was here, where would I want to put my stuff? I'm trying to let these guys have some room to do that. You know, I guess, I'd hate to see somebody come back for that, something that simple, but I suppose, you know, if somebody was steadfast on doing something outside of those areas, they should always come back and talk to you guys. But you're right, I believe, every time I think about, well, if I just show them a whole lot as, you know, tree clearing and let you guys reel it in if you have good reason, but I try to come in with a happy medium before we get to it.
That's very much appreciated.
I appreciate it.
I mean, it also, too, depends on what the client is saying.
Yeah.
I would, you know, if I was doing it, I would want to have, you know, as open as possible as I could do what I wanted, and not have to come back.
Yeah.
That would be, so, I'm a lot, you know, in the same kind of as Dennis.
Yeah.
You know, limiting the property going round needlessly.
Joe, how big is that? No, the mother lot, how big is that proposed area?
I have to look at that fine print, because I can't remember, it's about to my head. Just over, yeah, just over eighteen acres.
The, the...
The, this lot.
The dark green, okay, what is the dark green?
Oh, this percentage of the lot, I would, I would have to guess maybe four acres of it, just, just under four acres.
Well, this one is two acres.
Yeah, and also even less.
Yeah, less than four acres.
Less than four acres.
Looks like about two acres maybe.
Oh, a little more than two acres, maybe.
Yeah.
He's probably right there.
Something like that.
Oh, wait, this...
If this is two acres, this is a lot.
Right.
They transpose that on here.
That's two acres, or less.
Approximately.
Or less, or less, absolutely. I'm sorry, I was looking at the small green lot. So, no, I'm just wondering what percentage out, what, do you know what the town has of the landowners?
No, he's, you know, again, lot one, he plans to sell just to try to reduce some of his investment. He's, he's talked about a couple of different options, options there. At one point, in building some sort of future home. At one point, more of like a storage-type building to put a couple of his votes and toys and things in. He's not, I don't think he's come to a complete decision on, on that particular use yet. But he's well aware that if he decides, depending on what he decides, he can back in here and talk to you guys, if it has anything to do with conditional use permit at all. If it's residential, probably just go straight to Ken.
But listen, it's cool for thought, for getting to it. That's all I get.
Okay. Anybody here? Any input? Taking into consideration what we have from our consultant questions, do we have answered them satisfactorily? Do I have a consensus on that?
We got a couple more things on the list.
Let's go with them.
Just a, I would suggest that we take all the waivers together.
Okay.
And, which it says here, ten point nine, applicant submitted a waiver, request for hydrological assessment. I think just get all the waivers, because we have another one now, and then prove those together.
Right, I think I have the rest of them on the list in that, in that packet, but I don't have the one above the other.
So ten point one, number three, under that one.
So, I would suggest we do that, all as a thing. And then the stormwater management plan?
You said there's stormwater management plan?
Yes, ten point, ten point twelve, the last thing on this list. And it says, although there's no proposed development, applicants shall provide more detailed descriptive how proposed clearing will impact existing stormwater flow into the site. So...
That would be, would you get that with the elevation survey?
Yeah, your driveways approaching the road are gonna be fairly level, aren't they? It's not a, and this is where the site, site walk would help.
Site walk's gonna help us.
But there's not gonna be much pitch of the driveway coming to the road.
Nope, you know, maybe a slight amount, but also what comes into play here with this particular subdivision is, you know, I already had to obtain DOT approval on those entrances, and DOT will also want to be notified when these two driveways are built, and have some input. That's part of our permit that is in your packet. So in this case, there's a little more oversight than there would normally be on that. And if we have, let's say we need a culvert perhaps, we definitely wouldn't on lot one, but maybe on lot two, if we needed a slight culvert under that driveway, DOT requires that they be involved with the sizing of that and the type of material, just to make sure of that. So we have to notify the instructors.
Is there a ditch there that's covered?
Very, very minimal one, but not really. What happens...
Is there a culvert under this one?
No.
Okay.
What happens is there's, you could tell probably, you know, years ago, there's kind of like a little barrow pit down in, down in this area, that, where it looks like a lot of gravel and things were dug out of there, probably to help build the road at one point in time.
Not very small.
So the water all naturally kind of comes down in here, there's a little bit of, it kind of goes up to where this old driveway was, and then it kind of sheet flows, it's sort of gradual down into this, this wetland area, then it's flat from there to the brook. Most of the, you know, channelized water that runs down culverts is on the other side of the road. You can tell they've done very significant brick wrapping and things over the years, so I'm working on the other side of the road, but it doesn't apply too much to this uphill side of everything.
Well, maybe if we just did something to deflect the water coming down the driveway into one of those barrel pits or something, maybe it...
Yeah, no, I...
I mean, that's where I see most of our stormwater issue could be just coming off this driveway and heading toward the wetland, and if we could deter it, then that would probably suffice for this project.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that, and I can, I could definitely come up with an idea. That's something, let's say, like in town Sanford, that they ask us always to make sure, you know, even if the driveway's coming down, that there's a little bit of up right before you get to, to the pavement match, because, so then the water will tend to go off rather than in the road, and I certainly don't mind a little bit of similar idea with this.
Anything else?
What comes to this? Do we set a site walk tonight?
Well, what I'd, what I'd like to do first is...
I'm done with this myself.
Entertain a motion to... Want to get to where it's right.
Accept.
Accept the, the preliminary as complete.
I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary plan as complete.
Second, second. Any further discussion? All in paper? And we would like to have a site walk, Joe? And if, uh... If we could come on days like today.
Right, as far as, you know, and I'm, I'm not even saying that we're not in any sort of rush with this particular one, but we're very blessed to be running into February first with almost no snow, and so I would hope to get out there sooner rather than later, just to not invite a two-foot storm to come on. Right now, you can, you can literally see the leaf matter on the ground on most of this, unfortunately, this lot right now, which is very beneficial for all of us.
Right, right. Okay, so I'm going to ask everybody to check their calendars, and we...
And we have to have fifteen, ten days, fifteen days.
We need, Brenda?
For your site walk, it's an additional meeting.
It's an additional meeting.
Oh, wait, just a meeting?
Yeah.
But the six is really important.
Yeah, the site walk is just gonna be, be that, the site walk, and...
Can we do that on the following Saturday? Do you want to do before?
No, we don't need...
No, can't we do it before?
We can do the site walk just about any time we want. I still am not happy with saying five o'clock or five-thirty, because it's still dark, and we lose members because they can't get on board.
But you still want seven-day notice?
Yeah, it has to be a week's notice, and, you know, I mean, I still think we look at, we're looking at Saturdays for that, so, I mean, we can, we can look at the eighth or the fifteenth, because it will just be the site walk as far as we know.
I would like to see it the eighth myself.
It would be the eighth. After this meeting, we would not be setting any more site walks. All right. Thinking of my dates.
We hold on.
Right, yeah, yeah. Who knows? Who knows?
I just think the sooner it is, the better chance, and it's gonna be, you don't have to be a snow.
Yeah, oh, I'm right. So how does that work for February eighth? And we meet at? Yes, as you asked. Eleven o'clock, we meet here? Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you guys want me to be me, too, here, or just be at the site with my client when we get there?
Please be at the site with your client.
And, and this, on the eleven o'clock, if it is chilly, it will be a little bit warmer.
Yeah.
You know, temperature can rise dramatically from six in the morning to eleven.
Oh, wow.
Not sensitive.
The, we have to decide if we're going to hold a public hearing or not, and that is, if you all remember, that is up to us. Do we feel a public hearing is necessary?
I think, I think it is always good to allow the public to come in and weigh in.
All three of them.
At least give them one opportunity.
They were all notified.
They were all notified of the application.
Well, and I understand, I understand that, but, you know, I, I think it, it would be wise of us to give them up to come in and face-to-face and, and tell us their thoughts.
Okay, that being the case. Oh, Gavin, I'm sorry, I didn't look over here.
Maybe you did, and I thought you started to say something.
Not particularly, who can be the reason?
Okay, well, I have had, um, one citizen landowner on Milton Mill Road approach me about what was going on over there, and, and so I think general practice has been that we have had a public hearing, and I think just to keep things continuing at the same standard, that I just think is a good idea. I don't, I don't see it being dragged out for four hours as long as...
Okay, then I am going to say we will have the public hearing on the twentieth of the month. We will have been on the site walk, that will be our next meeting after that. That works for you, Joe?
Yes, it does. I just, um... So, for clarification's sake, is there anything having to do with this that we want to discuss? There's a meeting between now and, I guess, my question would be, is there, are there any revisions, is there any additional information everybody would like to see? And obviously, I'd like to keep things moving forward. I don't want to get held up with questions on the twentieth of the meeting after that we could have potentially discussed before. I could have had better prepared for you, so I guess that's my question. Is there anything, you know, final plan-wise that we could, you know, obviously, we can't get that far in the final plan process until we do the site walk and we have a public hearing, but I can be prepared, so if both those things go well, we're hopefully pretty close to the finish line. So I guess, is there any reason for us to, to speak at that other meeting, or is that thing the board would like to see between now and that public hearing? You know, I'll take care of everything we discussed on these lists. I do need to have a waiver request written, written request.
If you get the waiver request done, and I'm going to go to Brenda on this one, the waiver requests are brought into you, the changes are made in the notes, make sure they come into the office. Don't wait, you know, you do not have to wait till the twentieth. We will have them before that in the office, and Brenda will see them, Ken will see them. We will, eventually, they come to us, but if there are any questions, you know, one of your buddies here is gonna call you up. You recognize the number by now, I'm sure. Because I, I hope it's Brenda, I hope it's Brenda. And so we'll have it all there, so if, if it's not there, we will be able to, to go from there. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's yours, that's mine.
That's mine.
Right.
Mine's right here.
It's like, there isn't, there isn't.
One of the waivers would be that you could waive the final plan process if everything's complete, I think, if you're interested in that.
Well, let's look at it, Bobby's here.
Absolutely. Yes, waiver, twelve point three, waiver procedural steps. I think you could skip right to, to final plan, as long as everything is locked up, and that was on plan. Am I right?
We have to accept the application, but we can do that all at once.
I believe so. I don't know if there's no loan improvements. There was, there was two or three criteria. Between that twelve point one, please, page fifty-six. Do you have a coffee shot?
I do, but I'm great. You're kind enough to make me a wonderful little binder, and I keep it in here. Dave was using it as a help. He put together that little information packet there, we were going through the checklist that you made up.
What page did you say that was on?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Twelve point one. Twelve point one.
Thank you.
Thank you, received. I think if you read that, we have this one down here. No, we have requirements up here. But if you go to twelve point three, okay, just the very first sentence on twelve point three. "The board may allow an applicant to combine the final plan and preliminary plan application steps into one procedure." Well, we have accepted your preliminary application. This is plan. "Upon making all of the following written findings: No new streets. No approvals are required from main DEP under the Site Location Development Act, Stormwater Laws, Natural Resource Protection Act, other than permit by rule. The board agrees to approve a waiver from the requirement to submit a stormwater management plan and a segmentation erosion control plan as ordinarily required by sections six and seven. And the application contains all applicable submissions required..." Excuse me, that's my shit. "...for both preliminary and final plan steps, except for those items which are waived and which are a waiver of required submissions, have been requested granted." So.
I don't know, I would suggest that we wait till after the site walk because I'm not sure I would approve a waiver for a stormwater.
For the stormwater management.
As of now.
Correct, I would agree with that.
But what you had asked on here was just going to be on the plan, right? Or did you want to know the whole stormwater plan?
We want to see it on the plan.
Yeah, isn't that what?
So that would just be notes, is what you're saying, not a whole written plan?
Right.
So that stormwater management plan is usually more of like an engineering-style plan that shows detailed grading, finished grading. They often include drainage points, things like that. How we've dealt with this topic, and maybe I didn't express myself well because I brought it up a little bit at the first meeting. Project is simple, you know, just simple in nature. How I've dealt with it in other jurisdictions before under these same steps is, you know, if, basically, you need to do a final, no matter what, you need to do a final approval. That's the night, I get my signatures on my mailer, but what we ask sometimes is that we kind of get to skip the preliminary vote. Your vote is combined for preliminary and final on one final vote that last night. And we don't have to do two separate votes. Because in bigger projects, like, let's say, Days and Farms, I would never ask for something like that. You just need to vote for it, approve the preliminary plan and then move on.
And I think, I think we all appreciate where you're coming from, what you're saying. Because it does cut down a lot, our time, your time, everybody's time, as long as we see it in front of us. The one thing I will tell you is, it's kind of what, I don't know, mother might have said to you years ago. "Joe, I don't care if every kid is jumping off the bridge. You're not to jump off the bridge. We don't care what other municipalities are doing. We have to go by these ordinances." You know, so, you know, not picking on you, but...
I would like to... Just want to show some people what agree with Gavin. I don't really think it's an educated decision without looking at it.
Well, wait a minute, we need to write two down here and put it up.
And you'd be, you know, the way it's cut down, what I'm saying.
So, I think what I was asking is normally, once you've gone ahead with your preliminary, then he would have to do a whole application for the final. And I think this is just saying that he doesn't have to go through that application process.
That's what I believe is saying.
Just to the final plan.
That, when you come back with the notes and everything and that stormwater, we're going to know and we can just go.
Yeah, I think if we just had a paragraph about stormwater management on the site, including something about the driveway entrances and the removal of this and revegetation of this, maybe, you know, is it going to be used at all after its grass? Or are you going to let natural vegetation come back? Are you going to block it off? Things like that. Just come up with a paragraph and then we wouldn't give a whole plan, sure, fine with me.
Yeah, I think that would work and the twentieth might be, you know, but...
Why not be in that?
Being it, but don't, don't wait on that date to get things into this office.
If you could get it early enough so that they could even have it on the sixth, so that they understand it by the twentieth, you might save a whole meeting.
Yep. Well, I agree.
Exactly. Okay. So I hope Maggie took it perfect and maybe you thought. And we will see you on the eighth at eleven a.m. And then again, for the public hearing on the sixth. Thank you very much, and thank you for the information that we have. You brought the information and, like I said, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you as well.
Did you get any of your subdivision work again?
You did. I take it home that you're doing that.
That's why I put names on them. Wait a minute. Not apparently, don't name one of them either. On the others, you did.
I have mine, she put my name on mine.
You liked her, I should say that. Mother said you liked it, you've always liked it, and everything.
The trip was very...
I hope the trip wasn't too arduous, getting stuck behind a...
Actually, we're lucky to get here.
I'm glad you got stuck behind an accident, it's never a coincidence.
We were. And you're coming up? Leaving sixteen, we're coming up ninety-five to one oh nine. Because New England was all blocked up, totally blocked up, there were two accidents.
And that's kind of a tough time because there's always a lot of stick yard traffic at that time.
Maybe it was just a dead stop.
You thought you were going the wrong way and going through.
Yeah, exactly.
You're okay on Saturday morning, there you go.
So I met most of you at the site visit, just to reintroduce ourselves. My name's Phil Wood, this is Adam and Victoria.
I think you all have this. Yeah. These are some pictures I just snapped. Some of them you're holding for me. But and I know we did ask you about a certified plot plan. And you, Brenda on the phone yesterday, I believe, asked you about that. And you dealt with that one.
We, we use a, what's a service that uses what's on public record.
Okay. That's the building plan, sorry.
There is something near this.
Yeah, I've got this one anyway.
Does everybody have them?
No, I think there's just one copy here.
Yeah, there's just one.
Maybe you did around.
Yeah, exactly. Brenda, let me do this. And here's this one. And I don't believe, Brenda was at your site walk, so this will be new to her. And I was, Leslie, I said Brenda, didn't I? Brenda, she wasn't there, sometimes we like her there. Leslie wasn't there and Tom was not there either. Tom, Tom has just come back to us after a hiatus of a while and we're happy to have him back here. And we're just going from there. These are the best pictures, I took them the other day. The cabinet, the cabinet of the house is down by the, I took these the other day, by the red fishing thingy that's up there.
Oh, the ice fishing hut.
Yeah. Yeah, are you ice fishing?
Yeah.
You're not going out there? Don't like it when the ice cracks?
Not this year.
Don't like it when the ice cracks, huh?
No.
You're walking on it.
I'll pass it down, show him. Thank you.
One of the questions we had was, you know you're very close to the water, there's no question of that. And in most cases, this would be, you can't do it. You know, give us a reason that you can't put that addition anyplace else. Can you swing it around to the back? Can you move it back by, if I were to call the addition, the way I'm looking at this picture, if I were to call this vertical, could you put it horizontal? So that brings you back further from the water. And things that come into it are like, how far back are you from the middle of the road? That's why the certified plan would have been extremely helpful because we don't know where the middle of the road is. Where does a private, is it a private way we determine?
It is a right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way.
Down into the top of our driveway where we were standing at the site.
Yes, okay, that's...
So that would be where the top of our driveway is and our property ends.
At the top of the driveway, that's a private way which we consider a road. Not a private road, but a private way is still a road, whether it's dirt or whatever.
Yeah.
So we do have quite a few questions for the ordinances, so... I was trying...
One comment that, you know, this doesn't put the building any closer to the lake.
No, it's actually, your addition would be further back from the lake than a lot of what's there already.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we're talking about... Thank you for passing the permit.
And your proposed addition's fourteen by twenty-four? Yes.
I'll be very honest with you, this is a tough one. Because, you know, rules could add, if this was an empty lot and you wanted to build, I don't think that.
I understand that.
And we understand that this has been in the family now for more than fifty years, something like you said to us.
This will be the fifty-first year.
I'd like to say as long as I've been alive, that would be a lie. No, but...
I, I just don't know, according to ordinance, if we can make a building more non-conforming. Because for the addition on the end of it like that, you're making, you're making the building more non-conforming than what already is.
I would argue that we're not making it more non-conforming, you know, it's non-conforming as non-conforming as already is.
I appreciate that, but you're making...
The footprint there.
The footprint, it is what I'm, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. That's where I get the more non-comformant from, where if, for, you know, what's required for your setbacks. And I'm just thinking to myself, and maybe I'm not any supposed to, but if you put the addition on the back side of the place, then you're not approaching the water more and making the building more non-conforming as far as your setbacks.
Yeah, but on the backs, the back side of the space, when you, we have to do a shed dormer, it would require more stone load on that structure.
Oh, I appreciate that.
So I think on the side, you want to create symmetry with the structure and, you know, although it isn't in the back of the structure, it's structurally a better location for the, for the zone, longevity-wise.
And if you just moved that back?
I think from a design standpoint too, we want it to look like it's always been there. If we start shifting it back, it's going to look like an addition on the camp. So to keep it symmetrical helps it look like it's always been there.
I appreciate, and I understand what you're saying that way, but we also want to protect the water and everything around it. And another, again, ideas, and we're, because this is a difficult one, we're throwing ideas out too. If you didn't put it in the back, but you moved the addition back, say, I want to say twenty-one, if you moved it back twelve feet, you know, instead of, instead of it being equal with the house, it was twelve feet back. I know that would change the way it looks, but it would be then, it would be...
It's over the septic.
Not if you go just, not according to this map. You go back twelve feet.
Oh, your septic line.
Yeah, your septic line.
But you're on sonotubes.
Yeah, you're on sonotubes, I mean. So it's where you put your sonotube, so it makes a difference there. But that would take it back, so part of it would be, you know, approximately fifteen feet back and the other side of it would be closer to twelve and nineteen.
Do you know what it's fifty, it's a value from the road?
Without a certified...
Without a sound?
We can't determine where that is.
We can't determine that.
Resign.
Does your deed state with that right-of-way, how far it comes onto the property or any time? It must have some kind of definition.
Well, again, the right-of-way comes down to the top of our driveway. It's owned by the Bob Martin, who was in the backlog in the, in the house that you drove by as you drove down Oriental Road. But I don't feel like that would be the closest point of the right-of-way to your structure. Because you're, as I remember, the right-of-way goes a little bit closer to the water and the structure being a rectangle, this corner, that would be your closest point between that, if you're facing the lake, the right-hand rear corner of the camp, and as the right-of-way. and as the right-of-way goes up, so that would be your narrowest point right there. You know, you've got a little more room at the top of the driveway in terms of distance between the back of the camp and the center of the right-of-way than you were 25 feet up the road.
Right, and I mean, this is a horrible picture, but...
And the right-of-way is not on this lot, lot plan, which...
It goes like this, the way the road goes right there. It's not a straight line at all. As he said, the bottom one, this is the bottom corner as you would turn in. And it's, so this puts you closer to the center, or this puts you closer, this puts you further from that center of the road. If we knew where it was.
Because you have nothing behind your build, usually we look for something like a septic behind it, the electrical lines are behind it, maybe, the right-of-way itself is very close to the camp, so there isn't actually anything behind the camp that would stop you from moving it back. So we pretty much always move it back. You're putting a new foundation and that's one of the things that triggers the best possible location procedure. You're putting it in, 14 by 24 addition is fairly large, that's like a whole nother camp, some of the size of these camps we look at. So I would, I would say that if you want to put a 24 by 14 addition, you're going to want to move your entire structure back. And that is your limiting factor, is 50 feet from the center of the right-of-way. Which, from looking at the site, because I don't have the numbers, it does look like there is some room to move it back.
To move the entire structure.
The entire structure.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't need to do that, you could say, oh, I'm just going to leave it in the footprint it's in. And when you work on the camp in its existing location, within the confines and not trigger the best possible location procedure.
We also got, we also got to look at this of moving everything back. Are we doing more damage to our environment, to our lake by moving the structure back and cutting down a bunch of trees?
This is something we talked about.
Making it run off a lot worse than, than building a building.
Yeah, so what I was going to say earlier is with the addition going up on the front, is the grade that comes into the front of that structure is significant right at the entrance. So there's no doubt if we're going to shift this back, we'd have to take a significant cut out of that, that footprint of the structure to actually get it level.
Yeah, a lot of these places end up with a data like basement because we shove them right back into the hill.
We put them back in a block.
Compared to what we usually deal with in active. And if you ask DEP, they said, push it back, it doesn't matter how many trees, what kind of hill it is, push it back as far as you can. You're going to re-vegetate in front of it and it's going to improve the lake quality over the long term. Because you think 100 years from now, the camp's been moved back, then in 100 years, you have a much better situation. If we sent this to DEP, they would say, push it back to that limit, which is 50 feet from the center line. So you...
Let me just clarify, you're talking about the whole camp?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the best possible occasion. So if you, just, there are several things that trigger this process.
I know, I know, that's why I said, we know this is difficult and we want to really...
But just a...
That would be a enormous cost, never mind not to mention you have to destroy the stone fireplace.
Mm-hmm, we know.
Well, this is, this is what we go through. And there are several things that trigger the best possible occasion practice. If you remove 50% of the value of your building, it's basically considered a replacement and we ask you to move back. If you're putting a new foundation underneath the existing structure, we ask you to move it back to the best practical occasion. And if you're putting an addition on, even if it's just an addition of volume, often we'll ask you to move it back because that's what we're asked to do by the zoning ordinance.
But the way it reads in, in the zoning documents is it says, "The new foundation must be placed such that the setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent." So the new foundation is what we're talking about, it's not the existing structure.
Well, which citation read, there's a couple of them that, you know, separately, one is 411.
Uh, one, 411, I have a copy of you guys' one.
We got it now, what, I'm sorry, did you do that?
1411, Expansion in the Shoreland District.
Yeah.
What page is that on?
That's on page five.
Too many books.
Grade one, four, so you're Jewish.
I'll find it.
Page five, at the bottom. 4.1.
So it's 1411 dot one, and then it's under subsection C. And it's just a few seconds, it's in there.
We can go right up, start with A.
Because I, I was questioning that too Gavin, and, you know, when I read that language of new foundation, I thought, you know, yes, you're right, you can push that addition back, but, you know, the structure, I think that's an extreme change for us, an extreme expense.
And not for any other reason, but just, certainly you don't pick on people. We all want to be happy neighbors. But in fact, if, if additions want to be put on new things, we can request and require that buildings are moved, they're moved back. And that's by law.
1.4, 11.
Yeah, A, B, C, D.
Point one.
Point one, page five, top of page five.
All right.
Are you in the right book?
Oh, yeah, I was just, it says it back here, 1.411, then it goes 1.411 on the next page.
Okay, this is expansion in the Shoreland District.
Yeah.
So when it has, the second half of that paragraph kind of freshes it out. If the completed foundation does not extend beyond the exterior dimensions of the structure, except for, for expansion conforming with section 1.4, 11, 2B above, and the foundation does not cause the structure to be elevated more than three feet additional, which you probably want to,
Right.
as measured from the F L side of the structure to the original level, it shall not be considered an expansion of the structure. But your foundation is going to exceed the building footprint existed, so it's considered an expansion. So you need to move the thing back if you wish to put that size addition on. We've done this dozens of times.
You were saying this, right?
What would allow us to expand and not have to move the building? Because that's going to rush the whole project.
Well, the expansion is volume or footprint, so you can't really expand because you're a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. So you need to move back if you wish to expand at all. And you'd still be non-conforming, but we would allow that expansion if you made the structure more conform.
I have a question.
Yes.
The trigger is that they're changing a foundation, that's, that's the trigger.
That is the trigger, yeah.
What would happen, can we build up instead of out without...
That's the volume, then they turn it 30% volume.
The trigger of 30%.
They've worked on that 30%, we've spent, Mr. Ordinize, hours on that 30%. So, I mean, if they don't change the foundation and build up, is that still a trigger? I don't know.
Well, it's the 30, that's an expansion of the volume of the structure.
That would, I would think that that would trigger the 30%. It's not, not a relocation.
Yeah.
But it would trigger 30%.
It's the same thing, the 30% is the relocation.
And again, it's high. And hopefully you guys understand that what my personal feelings are about this situation is really relevant. That we need to go by what the town's adopted, the state made laws. And so again, I would go back to, in at least my personal opinion, understanding exactly what you're saying about putting addition on the back or the front or towards the road. And I understand you not wanting to do that, any reasons why. But if you could do that, and I'm just having this conversation with everybody, instead of having to go through the threat of relocating the whole place, the cost difference really wouldn't be that much. Obviously your roof, you know, your snow load and stuff would be different, but you could still accomplish it. And that's just something I'm throwing out there and trying to help a little bit. Which I think is our job to try to find a way to make it work if we can make it work.
If we can make it work, we want to do that.
I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and one of, one of the things, I mean, I already said once, if you could move it back 12 feet, even if you swung it back, not the entire thing, but you left, how long is this again? 24 feet. Okay, and this is 34 feet. So if you left 10% hanging off the back, you know, instead of this, you put it like this, leaving a little bit so you have the sideline that I'm sure you would like. You know, and again, you wouldn't be getting into your septic or things like that. I don't know, somehow to work with it, what, what...
But is that triggering moving the whole camp because we don't want to spend more money redesigning the whole addition? And then having us have to come back here and move the whole thing back again?
Are you getting into that conversation?
Yeah, it really revolves around the fireplace, you know, that, that's kind of a big element to take down and...
If I, if I said to do that, and again, as Dennis said, this is just conversation. You know, if we move it back here, if we move it, if we move it back behind the house, but not completely behind the house, you know, halfway. With half of it sticking out somewhere. Could we make that work for them? Otherwise, we, our really hands are tied. So we have got to, you know, we want to come up with the best we can for you, but...
It's really hard because without knowing where that 50-foot line is.
Without knowing where that 50...
Or what the parameters are or what really we're looking at.
Exactly, exactly.
No, we do know that they do have room to, to do it on. The exact footage, no, but there's plenty of room between the back of the, of the house or the front of the house and the road.
Right, but it's hard to say this is our recommended.
Exactly, usually we do it by foot.
Right, and say no, yes.
Yeah.
Put exact footage, what, where it has to be and stuff. And so that's why this one's just a little different.
Exactly, I mean...
I would suggest you get a certified block later.
One of the things I will tell you, because I know you do, is you, especially with interior design, text, text maps are notorious for being inaccurate and notorious. That's why the certified plan gives us a better picture. And because then we can look at measurements and see how we can make it work for you and stay in the perimeter that we are given by statute.
Yeah, I, I don't, we can fall off with a, with a block plan. I don't think anything that we would do off the front would allow us to keep the integrity of, or the character of the camp on the inside, which is the reason why we wanted to preserve it. The layout on each side allowed us to add a more modern addition off to the side of an authentic camp on the inside. And this is all interiors, it doesn't really matter, but it matters to us.
Of course it does.
So it's not like off the front, you know.
Right.
It just, it's going to take a lot of the original character out of camp, so I don't know if that's even an option that we would.
It's kind of dead to me if we can't do it.
Yeah.
Just keep it alive.
Yeah.
I'm not really interested in having a body of issue.
Well, there are people very skilled at moving these camps, they just put the metal I V two underneath and move the whole thing back.
Yeah, that's, that's huge.
Yeah.
Well, I would, but I would ask for you guys to think about what we talked about a few weeks and postpone any decision on the planning board and give you guys a chance to think about it. I understand completely what you're saying, but I wouldn't make a decision tonight if you were to want it.
Yeah.
And postpone this to the next meeting when you guys can think about.
Yeah, and I appreciate that talk.
Yeah.
That would my recommendation.
And, and look at ways, and I know this is probably breaking your heart, being an interior decorator, okay? I understand that. I mean, I do landscape design, so if somebody's telling me, you know, they're going to move that bed, I'm like, ah, you know, no. I understand completely, but from the pictures you gave, the ones that you have done, which I think are lovely, I think this is what it looks like now. And I think you're talented enough that you can maybe, you know, take that box, I'm going to call this this rectangle, move it around a little bit further back, so it's not coming out so far, where maybe you only have to put a door, an opening, or an H G T V, probably French doors in every place, you know, to get from this part of the house into the new part of the house. And, you know, do some sketches, they don't have to be, you know, artist renderings or, as long as we can see what you're doing. And if you can get that, that certified block plan, check your deed, you know, and go that way, we can have a conversation and see how we can, or what we can do. So we just don't have to say, no, you can't do it.
Yeah, so you're suggesting that we change the design to start from the face facing you from the top of the driveway? Back towards the top of the driveway?
Well, maybe halfway.
Maybe.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the whole.
No, 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 it wouldn't be.
It won't be the whole thing, it wouldn't be.
No, no, no.
You know what I mean? And, and, and I just got confidence and I understand what you guys want to do, I appreciate it. But I just got confidence in the people, since you know they, it may not be exactly what you want in the end, but you'll still be able to accomplish what you want.
And you never know, because sometimes having to do something is a blessing in disguise.
Yeah.
Where, I mean, when we're doing our work, I mean, and this is common, because they wanted us to move our house back. Because we didn't leave the setback from the road. And the only reason we did not have to move it was because the well was 18 inches off the back of the house. So the well went in the basement. But the changes that we were forced to make ended up being better than what we had initially envisioned.
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily...
And I think almost everybody here can tell you a story if they're on waterfront. Leslie's on waterfront, I'm on waterfront. We wanted to put in a patio and I'm 75 feet back from the water. I could not put in, not even a concrete pad to create one. And when we moved up here, I had one branch out, now I got seven. And it was really nice having that lawn. You know, I've got like an eight-foot concrete slab that goes out of the house and that was fine. But I've got a lot of space before they hit the water. And it was like, wow, you know, if I had put in this 30 by 20 patio that I wanted, you know, with the pizza oven and all that, would have been grand, but couldn't, couldn't even put anything in. So we, I just want you to know, we do understand. But see what you can do if you can get that, come out, we'll have a conversation. We, we are sympathetic to, but we all go by these rules, these ordinances.
And that's the problem. It doesn't matter what I agree with or not.
Yeah, exactly. It, it doesn't matter what we've actually made, it's...
And there are some boards, not, I'm not saying no one in this town, but there are some boards that just say move it back or go out some year. And that's the end of it, and I wouldn't want to do that, I think it's bad.
We appreciate that.
All right.
Save your time.
Thank you.
Give Brenda, Christine, you know, keep it on that.
Stay in touch.
Thank you.
You've got Brandon's speed dial.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, guys. We're going on to new business right away. What's not on the agenda though, that I do want to bring up, is we, we being, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that it's put in track where they belong. Jim Crowley, Ken and I went to a class in Sanford on wind farms and solar energy. It wasn't just wind farm, that's misleading, home or wind farms. And since there is one coming up before us at some point on Hopper Road.
H-Road.
H-Road, thank you. We felt it was very important. And I think what we learned about it is we need to learn a whole lot more about it. That's, but I'm sure. The other thing we got, which is...
Did they give you any tools?
Not, not really, not...
Did you get it on drive, no?
No, we didn't get it on drive. Thank you. But MMA, it's right in front of me, is having classes on seasonal rentals. It is May 13. It's going to be in Portland. And since that is a big thing, and since that's a big thing that we are working on with our ordinances, the regulating vacation rentals, and it will include short-term rentals. It's in Portland and Ken's going, I'm going, and, you know, another member or two who would like to go would be a good thing.
May 13?
May 13.
That's an all-day class.
Sorry?
That's on a evening class.
No, no, it's not a day. No, I think it's a Wednesday. I think, yeah. Let me go back to, I can look it up right now. Well, I've got it, I've got the thing in front of me. I just have to get it.
I'll go with that voice.
Okay, so it is a 13, a Wednesday. A Wednesday. Okay, 13 is a Wednesday. Does it give us the starting date? Time, I mean, under the big... I don't remember what I saw yet. There's, there are also, no, even in the...
Portland. Oh, I didn't know. Any trouble, anywhere?
Yeah, it's up to where the Pilsbury Arch it was.
Yeah, that's not before us yet, but it is coming down the road. It's about a...
Big project.
It's a big project.
Huge.
It's five acres and they're talking about...
I forget, how many megahertz?
Four megahertz.
Yeah.
And the only thing, the only thing that I heard from that was that in figuring how much land you need for one of these solar installations is you always need more land than you think you need. I mean, it's like, they say one acre per megahertz, but then the structure, the roads, the way you get into them.
Maintenance.
Maintenance and a maintenance building, all of that adds more space to, you know, so if you're working on five acres, maybe you're only going to have a three megahertz. A three megahertz is a lot of, it's a big project.
I wouldn't be surprised when it gets all laid out.
Solar. Solar.
I wouldn't be surprised when they get all laid out there to a couple of five acres.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's probably no doubt about that.
Right.
And it's a multimillion dollar project, so...
There are an awful lot to be considered with that because it's, obviously, the state, the feds. There is a project going on and when this finally comes up to us, I would like to be able to talk to the gentleman from Sanford, who's the head of the, do you remember, Jim? The guy from Sanford?
One committee he was on.
Yeah, Economic Development or something like that. They are putting up a huge solar farm at the airport, kind of in the back. And what they went through, I mean...
Who was it, Lee?
You know?
Lee?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Lee? Or another guy?
I don't recall. Jimmy Lear, nice looking man, could be. But, you know, it's incredible because he says, you know, you've got to start thinking of snakes and grasshoppers and, you know, I mean, it's animals and everything, you know, is there a little...
The Sanford project, the biggest thing was the FAA.
Yeah.
With you.
Because it was at the airport. It was the FAA and that. But, and their project actually started in 20...
2012.
Well, before that, they started 2006, but it actually hit the ground 2012. And, you know, it's not done yet, but it will supply the electricity to, I think, what they consider South Sanford and the new school.
Wow.
So, you know, it's a...
Oh, I thought it probably would be going Massachusetts like that. A little line they want to put in.
We get a plan?
Yeah, we'll go on from that.
Okay.
But, so that's where we are. So I think those, you know, we'll keep looking for more solar information. I'll make copies of the two brochures that we got at that meeting, which are really like by a solar company. So, you know, we have to take that with good information, but it was, the thing was done by a solar company. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind when we look at it. Maine does, it turns out Maine is one of the leaders in solar energy. They were very late starting, but they're one of the leaders in solar energy in the country with projects that are going on. And they're finding that in some of the forest lands where they're cutting down the trees for this, they get more from the solar and, because now it's grasslands underneath and meadow than what the tree might grow, trees might really be worth. So, I mean, there's so much to learn. But we'll get the thing on that.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
The...
You also have Tom?
Yeah, you guys.
Is it the same firm that's proposing the one?
No, I don't have any idea what's going on with the acting one yet. We have no idea. We just know it's coming down the road. Tom?
Pretty amazing.
Yeah. Tom, can you make our workshop on Wednesday?
No.
I mean, if you need a ride, I could pick you up if you can make it.
I'm doing it, but...
I would like to, before Tom leaves, I would like to personally thank Tom for coming back. And I miss you. Jeez, I can't believe I'm saying this about Tom. I miss your wisdom, Tom. And it has been missed and I'm glad you're back and I will wish you the best.
I'm sure he's a commendable of reminds.
Oh, yeah.
And Tom, you do know that this room has a name now, right?
Yeah. I was going to ask, when is the audio meeting, the ice cream?
When you want. Whenever you're ready. You're back, we'll have whatever you want.
Is the camera off?
No. Excuse me.
Before we adjourn, I want to bring up the information about the Fire Marshal's office coming in. And new time for our workshop meeting. It might, it's generating some interest from different people. I've heard from two different people. One from Rochester, they would like to come in and listen to him speak. I didn't give them an answer, but I didn't really think it was going to be a problem. But does this committee have any problem with outsiders coming in to sit down and listen?
When we're having a workshop, it's an open meeting.
Okay. And also, if that's the case, we might want to invite our neighbors on the other side of the lake, their, you know, representatives. If we can put something together as a group that would take both sides if...
Yeah, since most of our lake, or, no, that's not the right way to put it. Our larger lakes are...
You shared?
Are shared.
Are shared. So if we could pull in the town of Shapley and bring them in and hopefully get the same type of regulations between the two counties, that would be a great thing to have.
Okay. I have the information on that workshop. Okay, it's going to be at the Holiday Inn. Registration is from 1:00 to 1:30. The workshop is from 1:30 to 4:30. Okay, so getting there's no problem and we'll come home and, ah, so we'll stop and grab something to eat.
That's right. That's what we do. That's how we roll.
There you go. Wait for the workshop traffic to die down.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We heard there's a good place in Sancho for lunch. So, do we have anything else? Wednesday, we're going to go back to the change, changes, yes, if that's okay with you?
Yeah. Bring your video.
If you don't mind. Okay, because I'm going to look at these things.
Yeah, I was just going to point them out to me.
All right. Well, that's what I wanted to move up. Yeah. I think he's ready to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, oh, yeah. All right, so you are going home with homework to familiarize yourself with, but you know our next meeting?
No.
Okay. Excuse, we, before you, I know you all are in, but I do need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second?
Tom did.
Oh, thank you, Tom.
I'm not supposed to vote.
We'll let you, if we're adjourned, we'll let it. All in favor?
You're only sitting back.
Thank you. We're forgetting everyone.